Congratulations. Ready, begin.
I have congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The goal report had a closed session. We have a motion to adopt the agenda of reception that we're pulling item twenty eight.
So, Gavin?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, as a special recognition tonight. Number one, every student seeking recognition, succeeding recognition, Grace Barrington, Top of the World Elementary, who is presenting. Mr. Conley, I should know that.
You were present, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Grace, what's your name? So Grace Barrington is a fifth grader here at TOW. And I'm going to share a few words that her teacher wrote that was always submitted to the county for the every student to see before. So Grace, by all accounts, appears to be a normal eleven-year-old girl. You'd never know she is, she's a fifth grader with diabetes. What I admire most about Grace is her ability to explain her disease and to not feel like a victim. She began school year by reading us a book and letting us ask questions about diabetes. She explained what it meant to be a diabetic and how her system works. Her calm nature and ability to answer our questions left the class with a clear understanding of who Grace is. Another one of our friends who just happens to have diabetes. To think about Grace is that if you didn't know she was diabetic, she wouldn't stand out in the crowd as one. She goes about her daily activities to the best of her abilities, always with a smile on her face. I'm cute. If she's feeling low or high, she's very aware of this, lets me know by the way. She's adapted so well to working with your team members and teachers to keep her safe. She works well with the team on campus to keep herself active and capable all day long. She's aware of her limits and will always let you know when she needs a break. It's so wonderful to see the staff know her so well and look out for her throughout the day. It's easy to get overprotective when you have a student with these types of special needs, but I always feel confident with the other adults, the office staff, P D coaches, and teachers, all looking out for Grace as well. She's so easy to like and keep safe. She's a strong girl, which does not let her diabetes hold her back in her day-to-day activities. So we've seen Grace grow at TOW and we're so proud of the young lady she's becoming. And I think what the best of all about Grace is, we have, this year alone, we've had two more students come to TOW with diabetes. One was just diagnosed, you know, this number of years, just recently diagnosed, the other girl just came from a different country. And Grace has kind of taken them under her wing and has been there to kind of mentor them and get them through that big part of saying, you know, how to deal with it and how to feel in COVID. So she's an incredible leader for all students on campus, but truly special young lady. And I'm very proud that she's part of TOW. And thank you all very much for allowing us to recognize her as a district's every student succeed.
Roll down.
Isn't that the article I read about where the girl came, had been comfortable in other places? And when Grace reached out to her, it really changed her whole perspective of how to be treated and how to feel more comfortable.
Absolutely, and Rhonda, shit, she has a family, but her mother Rhonda, cousin Ron, father Ron. They're twin brother-teams. But I know when Ron's been instrumental with the parents, kind of being a good support system for them as well, so. But they're incredible.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Thank you.
May you enjoy dinner.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Okay, we have a second recognition today. This has to do with our gold-ribbon schools, El Moro and Top of the World Elementary Schools. And I suspect we have both principals.
We do. Can you see that?
Good evening. We want to talk a little bit about our gold-ribbon school applications. And of course, we're honored to be recognized as a gold-ribbon school. And I wanted to tell you a little bit about our application. Our signature practice for El Moro was our Twenty First Century Writing Program. And this was a confluence of several factors. It was professional development provided by the district in Charlotte Knox, thinking map training, and of course, the new standards that came into play several years ago. We're able to implement a writing program where the students are able to do narrative writing, opinion and argument writing, and informative writing. And each time they do these different types of writing, there's a pre-assessment. And at the end, after the teachers have taught them how to organize their thoughts on thinking map and through rough drafts and editing, then at the end, we do a post-assessment. And we've been able to show, or we were able to show, how the students' writing improved throughout this process in each type. And when you go to the school, you can see writing all over the classroom walls and on display throughout the classrooms. And now it's just become part of our normal instructional program. So that was our signature practice that we shared.
Question?
Yes.
What grades is it?
K through five.
Well, it's all gold, isn't it?
Yes. In kindergarten, they actually make a decision on whether they're going to step on the ant or not. They read a book about whether they should squash the ant or not, and then they give an opinion. And of course, it looks a lot different in kindergarten, which just prompt them and up them along all the way until fifth grade.
Those kindergartners do have opinions.
Yes, they do. They're happy to share them. And I am also happy to note that our application was considered exemplary and we didn't need to have a visit from the Department of Education to verify our board. So I was proud of that.
Who is primarily responsible for doing the application?
The team that wrote the application was myself and the intervention teacher and the grade level chair. Trenana Ramazan was editor. And she and I worked closely on editing everything, and the graphs, and the charts, and the data. And then she actually visited every classroom and spoke with the grade level chairs to a PLC at our site department meeting, or not department, grade level chair meeting. And we were able to gather all the information we needed for the application.
Thank you.
It was kind of a collaborative effort.
Who actually makes the decision whether a school gets a gold ribbon?
The county Department of Education reviewed all the applications and stored them on behalf of the state of California. So the county is actually trained by the state on what they're looking for and what the rubric is and all that good stuff. And then each county rates the applications that are turned in. And there were over six thousand elementary schools in California. And seven hundred and seventy were recognized as gold-ribbon schools. So it's twelve and a half percent.
You just figured it out.
Just right now. No, I actually, I'm sorry, but I could lie to you and tell you that I did not tell you.
Well, at Top of the World, we decided to select our MTSS as our signature practice. So recognizing all of the academic supports and interventions that have been placed, as well as all of our behavior supports. I feel, because we've been doing so much, in previous years, with the California Distinguished School Process, they've recognized the RTI in response to intervention. But I feel like we've really expanded it, you know, under the guidance of Irene. And we've done so much in the social-emotional realm that I thought it was important to highlight all the hard work that the team had been doing. It was a little tricky to get all that into four pages. But it was amazing just to, you know, just to really, you know, document and list all the things that we are doing to support students both academically as well as social-emotion. And it was an incredible process. We really came together as a school and just kind of just started crafting everything we wanted to mention. And then myself and the support team worked to create and get it down to the four pages. But it was great to get recognized as well, like I said, just kind of patting the back and realizing that there's so much that we are doing to support our students. So it's great to get the recognition, saying, yeah, we're doing a great job. We're doing so much to improve the lives of the students here in the intervention. It was lovely to have both schools recognized. As Mr. Duddy so carefully noted, yes, he had the exemplary report. So they had decided, because there was too many schools to go and visit, they had decided to choose from the top, which could go on without getting application or getting a visit. We were lucky enough to get a visit, it was actually nice to, you know, have them come out. So it was exciting, but.
Have to show off your school, right?
We definitely got a chance to show off the school. And it was incredible having the amount and talking to the kids and talking to the parents and just seeing how passionate the TOW community is for, you know, to show off what we do. So it was a special time. And I was involved, we were able to go on visits as well with other sites. And it was great to kind of get out and see other districts and those schools doing so. It was a really cool process. And after the candidate you mentioned, it also goes, it finally goes up to Tom Torlson. He gets the final approval and word. And he sent out the congratulatory emails to all the principals. It's exciting, and we have a few nights ahead of us. May tenth, we'll be, won't be able to meet the next four meetings. We'll be at Anan for celebrating all seven hundred and seventy-two schools at an event from three-thirty to eight-thirty at the convention center. And then again, on sixteenth, we have a county event as well in Garden Grove, so it's exciting.
Congratulations to them.
Oh, no, it's great, yeah.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Say one thing.
Sure.
I just, I think that it's such a valid, or such a valuable thing to do this because it allows you all to self-reflect, number one. And it's harder, I think, for schools like TOW and El Moro to really show what, how do you move from here to here when you're already doing so much? And the fact that you can do that with excitement and letting everyone, you know, the people who read it, get it. I think that's huge. And so I appreciate that because I think it's a lot more work when you're already at the level that you're operating at to be recognized in this way. So I mean, it's obviously well deserved, but the work from the self-reflection that went in, I think, is equally important. So thank you.
Very proud of our schools. Next is our public comment for items not on the agenda. I see you sitting there.
Little man, get home.
Well, Matt's going in.
Murobeo. My name is Bruce Howie. A ninety-five-year-old, fifth-year resident of Laguna Beach and chairman of the Council of Grandness Foundation. Fourteen years ago, in Florida, I established the Robert Schools Theater Arts Award with a commission sculptor of Apollo, the historic legacy of ancient Greece. This has been going on for all these years for all the schools in Robert County. Based on that, I asked the principal of Laguna Beach to establish a visual and performing arts award to be conferred each year on the outstanding student, student, teacher, artist, and theater, drummer student. We had no criteria, so I asked the principal to consider a meeting with Margaret Ressler, Peter Chider, and the current head of the department. I haven't heard of him, but you see that there with the criteria and the endorsement of the mayor of Fort Lauderdale. The second is, as a lifetime member of the Journalism and Education Association, which is the governing authority for all high school journalism, I propose to Mr. Presskey that we have a special honor dedicated to the impact of war, which is the highest national war for investigative high school journalism. I haven't received a notice from Mr. Presskey, which was sent on January sixth. So I notified the principal about that, and I heard nothing from the principal. I am making this information available to you because I have successfully pursued the journalism area and the performing and visual arts. And I'm very concerned in this historic legacy of Laguna Beach, which is the artist, to have that recognized and also the illegal change from artists to breakers to get more money. Two football players complained to their mommies about that. And the principal, at the time, they were able to change it to more money. Thank you very much, and I hope you can go along with this, and let's keep the faith.
Well, is there anyone else would like to make a public comment on not on the agenda? All right, hearing them, we're moving down to our reports, section eleven, our student representation. First, Colette, you got it.
Hi. So the career fair is this Thursday at L V H S. And then R O P students were recognized last night. There were seven students from L V H S. And then students are also preparing for the AP exam, which starts, I think, next week, for the next couple of weeks. And then seniors are also getting college acceptance letters back, so. And then the dance concert is this weekend, Friday and Saturday. And learning walks start Wednesday. And then we also just had ASV elections and a student house of rep meeting last week. And then volleyball is unbeaten in league, tennis is unbeaten in league, golf is unbeaten in league. And then baseball just lost a league game for the first time in like four years, but they're still doing very well. And then swimming is undefeated and track and field is as well. And then we also have prom coming up on May twenty-third.
Did you move that date in the working or whatever it was? It changes.
Yes, it changed it. It was on a track C I F, yeah.
Track and swim, right?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our review, I hope our Loofer, you moved also, we have the Loofer representative.
Okay, by the very long agenda, I'll be brief. But one nice thing, compliment to everyone, we call markups, both teachers, to all of you, is that the scholarship committee, as we meet with students who are now leading the program, we hear so much positive feedback. The kids recognize that they have been able to move through a program where they've gotten support at every level, from the time they were kindergarten until graduation. They have teachers that care a lot about them, they have administrators that care a lot about them, all of you working behind the scenes to make it great. So it's such a gratifying feeling as we come to the end of the year, there's so much positives from so many people. We've had some collaborative efforts that have done well. Some high school kids put together a video, sorry. Put together a video for the mental health awareness and it won second place at the state. We have had a combination of some elementary kids and middle school and high school kids that part of the pals program, put together a why we choose not to smoke video that was chosen to be highlighted at a consortium for two B today. So just great collaborations amongst everyone, and we are all geared up to finish on.
And you have our C S E A rep today. Couple of ladies.
I'll make this a brief as well. Hi, Mindy. C S E A is just a recent startup, just scheduled in two days to negotiations, and we hope to be finishing up soon. Also, at last month's meeting, I had mentioned that we have a celebration for C S E A's School Employee of the Year, District Employee of the Year, as May eleventh, well, we had to change that date to May eighteenth. So we'll be sending the information out to the by all board members of administration. And that's about all for now, so thank you very much.
Thank you, moving on to our organizations, we have P T A to that tonight. Okay.
Thank you. Our P T A right now is actually in the process, we still have a couple to stay under the elected presidents. For most of the P T As, the unit P T As, we expect to have elections for the high school tomorrow, or not tomorrow, Thursday morning, so we should have a full slate by then, which is great. Coffee break is coming up on May eighteenth. Again, it's going to be at the Hotel Laguna from eight-thirty till ten-fifteen. Denise Pope is speaking regarding the well-balanced student, avoiding stress and over scheduling. So that should be probably well-attended, and have a coffee break, I will be there. And then we also have the Angels Night coming up tonight, I believe, at least at Top of the World. And I think at most of the schools is the final ticket purchases online. And that game's on May twenty-first, seven of my first Orioles. And the six dollars and the fifteen dollars goes to the P T A. So it's a pretty nice competition they get this. I also wanted, we just thought hot off presses, I guess, our volunteer hours. So every year, we look forward to seeing how many, and I know it's under registered, but we had seventy-two thousand, like, eight hours, which if you were to say the mean South of California wage would probably be about one million eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So pretty impressive to have that much, you know, support behind our district. So I'm very glad of that, since I thank everyone. I also wanted to, I guess, end with, I found out that also Michael Budo, who was up high school, got awarded seventy-five, seven hundred and fifty dollar scholarship from P T A. So that was kind of nice to have that come local, which I don't know if we've had that before. That's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Other organizations, school power, or others? Let's go. Okay, then we're going to board members. Dee.
Okay. Let's see, we haven't met for a while, so I might not remember everything. Just today, I was at the Community Coalition, and I did get to see the video that won second place for mental health. It was great. And I'm really glad to hear from Mindy about the smoking video, because one of the things that we learned was that smoking and vaping are actually up in our district, so.
We're gonna end it, though.
Your video will do it all. I noticed how many wonderful things we had in the arts. I enjoyed Big Bad Musical at Thurston. And what I especially loved was the joy of the kids performing and just how happy they were to be out there and with each other, and it was wonderful. And from that, I noticed, you know, I've been thinking about our community and the arts. I also went to the Community Arts Celebration Awards in May and the Hero Project. And our community not only celebrates the arts and creativity, but really support them. And that brings me to this, last week, I was a docent a couple of different days for the art museum for third and fourth graders from Santa Ana. And we had gone in and done classes, two classes with them, and then one art project. Because they didn't have a lot of art, like we don't. So just from that, then they had their first, their only field trip to come to Laguna Beach. And for some of them, it was their first time ever seeing the ocean, which was incredible because some of their parents don't have cars and, you know, they don't get out. But being with the kids was fabulous. They were really, really well behaved and so excited. And just from those two lessons, they had made so many connections with art, they had so much of the vocabulary. And I do it with our third graders, this year, one of our third graders from one school didn't come, they did from another. But these Santa Ana kids are ahead of ours. Because we're not, you don't have, you know, we only have whatever it is, the master's project. And these kids, you know, they were able to make connections, even though a lot of them, their English wasn't that good. Like this time, we have Helen Lenderberg, and you kind of go through her life. And when you get to the third room, her colors have really gotten dark and dim. And it's during World War II, and her mother's sick, she's depressed. And the kids notice how the hues had changed. And then one little boy says, you know, like Picasso, blue time. You're right. She was really blue, like Picasso. And another kid said, you know, Picasso lost his friend. I mean, oh, I know, and she felt like that too. We went to another room where she got happier again, and all of the campuses are like my size, five by five, big. And they said, oh, rose period. So it was just fabulous. And I would love, love if our kids, our elementary kids, could have an art specialist. And I know I called on Monday and I talked to the vapor person in Santa Ana, who also is the president of the Art Association. And she was talking about how many new art teachers they're hiring in L A, in San Diego, Santa Ana. And we talked about how with Common Core, the language, the academic vocabulary that goes along with art, you have that for science, you have that for math. And when you look at a painting or you go to a play, you analyze it, like you analyze text. And for our kids, not to be able to have that when we're from an art community, is really sad for our kids.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I attended a few meetings, I think Tammy does a great job leading P T A council. And they have reported, they finished basically their major fundraisers. And because of all those hours put in, they raised a lot of money and they really share it. And they're making us able to do some things in the schools that we wouldn't do otherwise. It's always greatly appreciated. As Tammy mentioned, they've had a little, at a couple of schools, getting people to take the leadership roles and they've been working on recruiting. Thirson P T A, they recognize volunteers, like they do every year. And they had drama kids in the band come in and perform for them because those programs are recipients of extra funding from P T A. So Jenny always tries to have programs come in and present to P T A at different times so that folks who are doing the work to Grace and many see what actually happens, how it comes to fruition. Ken and I attended a couple of R O P meetings. We had one planned, and then we had to go a week before because we needed to approve the interim report. And then the Food Willa C T grant, that both districts will get money from that for those programs. And then the next week, we had another meeting for approving the budget to plan for next year and courses. And they're expanding their course offerings. And they also had to, down there, to reinstate some positions that last year, they felt when it was under the direction of CAPO, that they thought CAPO employees could pick up all the R O P work. And they found out that that was more than they could do. So they brought some folks back and that re-approved all that, of course. And Ken and Bill were unavailable, so I was attending the school power and district small meeting. And Rob and us, we are excited because they raised far more than they're anticipating by the need. And so they are able to do it as a classroom. And they've been looking at which classroom and how that will work. And then it's really so much for the tech team, the tech team is so involved in that. People loved the video. They had a huge, huge favorable, over favorable reaction to the video. That really went over well, and so that's, it was clever, it was really, really clever. But she was really excited that they exceeded their goals. And then also Mike and the tech team are really, they want to have it in place, everything in place by when school starts because that's what people look for, and that's a task, just ordering all the furniture. So that was the main topic of our discussion. And then, let's see. I did stop by late for the health fair, and I really encouraged Johnny, seemed a little like, not that I came, but then I went around and like Anne from R O P, she thought it was great. I mean, she connected with some folks, and the same with Lisa Vanderbeek. I mean, they were happy that they connected with people who, whoever did come, that it was important to those folks. So they're looking, and I think that Darling and Sheringham were down there. That they're maybe a different venue, that might be a little more accessible to people. And then, let's see, I would be interested to see, and I'm sure that Chris, that we have that gender report due for sports at the end of the school year. I'm curious to see what that is, and not only what it is, but what the state intends to do with that. Because it's, and you can't make kids participate in sports. We have a law that you participate, but I mean, they seem to want to break it down by gender, which I find is, we have so many kids and so many teams, I'm not sure that it will be.
We'll be fine in Laguna, sometimes, yeah.
It will be possible, but I just don't, you know, it seems that that's pretty common. I mean, we, so I'll be curious to see that, the results of that. When you said about the museum, if anyone in here wants to go, the museum is free to residents of Louisiana, right? So you can focus on that. I think that's, oh, I did have a call from a former teacher, and her question to me, a former Thurston teacher, again, playing, that she wanted to know if we were doing anything in Laguna about encouraging kids to register to vote. I said, well, as a matter of fact. And so I was able to tell her all about Kathleen Fay and what she undertook and the reception it got. And she was really delighted because she'd been in contact through being involved with U C R A project. She has a friend who's on the board and potentially will be in that. And so she was going to report back to her, because her friend had asked her, are you doing anything down there? So it was great to be able to say that we had it on the pilot program, and the kids were excited about registering in, that we could encourage them and talk about the importance of exercising your right to help them register, but then to vote. Thank you.
Go.
Well, dodo, the Big Bad Musical, loved it, absolutely, thank you. Well, um, dito, the Big Bad Musical, loved it. Absolutely. Thank you so, so much for having the kids. We're having a ball and it was just, yeah, it was great. ROP, the only thing that I might add to that is we are kicking around a possible new name. It'll still keep South Coast ROP, but we're thinking of the big kind of header being College and Career Advantage, which, cause it ties into CTE stuff and then also, you know, everybody wants an ABA transfer. So, I'm gonna use it that, that way. And I actually went to the, um, Distinguished Student Recognition, um, last night for ROP. And it was, I'd never been because I've always had a kid at home and trying to get things organized. It was an hour long, but it was so worthwhile to go. Um, those kids are, they, it, it's amazing what it means to so many of them to participate in these programs. Some of them, I think it changes their lives for real. Um, and others, it just expands their horizons. Um, we had, I think, six or seven from Laguna. I, we didn't have a lot of our visual arts and I, I'm gonna find out why. Um, uh, but, but the ones that were there was lovely. And one student, they had, then they had recognized nine overall from the various, um, uh, what do you call it? The disciplines. Yeah, whatever the, the areas are.
Industry sectors.
Industry sectors, that's industry sectors. And one young woman stood up and what she said resonated so deeply with me and actually is the reason for ROP. Um, she said, in a regular classroom, you learn how to do something. ROP teaches you how to be something. And when you think of it that way, that's huge. So here's a student who's seventeen, eighteen years old, and she's thinking about being something. And that is a gift. Um, so I hope that those folks who kind of poo-poo ROP hear that and, and think about what that means and allow their students, their own students perhaps, to take advantage of some of these things.
That's it. Amazing that, that they have redesigned the cover for the.
Oh, yeah, it says here.
And you have, which shows the students in, the things they engage in class, which are really career oriented.
Yeah.
So that, but it's, yeah, so it's, it's act rather than be.
They're really trying to make sense of saying.
Now they will show their ways.
It's for real.
It's a lot of good classes.
Sure.
Well, De, you and I obviously crossed paths but did not see each other. And I was like, oh, there it is, oh, there it is. And, and dito on that, and dito on the Hero Award Celebration, that's anyone. And then, um, and then the video that you're referring to, Mindy referred to, Eli Meister's video that she submitted, it was so wonderful. So she took, oh, the, the kids put on T-shirts that had, uh, mental health, right? And then they walked around and she's like, don't, you know, you are not your mental health. And they, I like to take them off. But it was like, but everyone's walking around with something. Everyone has something. It was just this really wonderful. And it was very, um, it was creative and it was brave. And it was instructional, like how to get support. It was, it was wonderful. So. And I did ask for permission, I could say her name. Talk to her. Is this, is this shirt, that should be her name, she's calling it? But she's so proud of it because she's not the kid who wants to be in front of anything. And so she got to find her place being behind and filming and narrating. And she's, she had a blast doing projects.
So, it was.
Yeah.
It was, it was quick to the point and just.
So wonderful.
Yeah. So, and then, um, our kids were in a lot. And I really enjoyed this break of the board meetings. And, um, what's up ahead?
Okay. Just I have one comment to begin. De had mentioned the smoking video. And I was just so shocked today. I had a appearance in downtown LA, so I'm coming back, trying to get to the freeway. And I've always seen some of these vaping stores around, but all of a sudden, this has exploded. All down Fourth Street, every single store, it seems, has converted to this. So I was thinking, we spent so much time and money and effort getting smoking down in California. We've done a really remarkable job with that. And now comes a new industry and I guess you can't stop progress. Whatever you wanna call that. But it was amazing to me how the scope, I didn't realize the scope of these businesses. Cause it wasn't one store. And I assume these are wholesalers. They're not just, people are going down to Fourth Street in LA to buy this stuff. This is going there and being distributed somewhere. And if it was one or two or three, it'd be one thing. But it was literally expanding like, man. So there must be a huge demand out there. And the first thing you think about is we worked so hard with kids. And then here comes something that was at a risk. So, just, just that.
And then a store opened, yeah.
Yeah. And I, I, I don't know what you do about it, um, but it sort of puts a nice address on a bad thing. Makes it look like it's not so bad. And it's the same bad thing. In some cases, I understand, could be worse thing because you don't know what people are putting in there. So.
And it's a direct gateway to smoking, which is also, of course, the vaping and marijuana, other drugs. So it's really, it's a bad thing and something that we've been keeping an eye on for a couple of years. But yes, there's been an explosion of vaping stores.
It seems amazing to me. Uh, if you'd gone down there and seen all those stores, like, like a holy moment.
Well, I just thought I saw it. I was down there for a concert and I saw them and it.
And, and maybe a year or so, there's a few of them. But now it's like, man.
It's to the toys or whatever there is.
It used to be toys and most of those stores are gone. And there's very, like, nice.
It's just a little study. Yeah, and it's, it's vaping. I mean, they've just changed the day and the.
Wasn't one.
Both, yeah.
So unbelievable.
And you can, and you can, she can't smell it, like you can, you know.
Well, it puts a nice, a nice cover on something that, A, is probably gonna end up being very, very bad for you. And B, it makes it easier for someone to then do it because now you don't have the social issue of stinking cigarettes. And now you don't have all those issues. And yet there it still is. And, uh, I don't know. It's, it is a tough issue. So we'll see what happens with it. But there are always new challenges. There are. Well, moving on then to number twelve, our consent calendar meeting.
We haven't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had one.
Happy Super Ten, anyway. I forgive these guys.
Uh, it's cause we were caught up in this important discussion. It's kinda like, kind of like saying putting lipstick on a pig, right?
Right.
Um, the only thing I would like to share tonight is that Rotary has Grace for Rads this weekend, Sunday, out at Tibbely Two, noon before. And we expect a really great turnout. And we use some money to fund scholarships for mostly Laguna Beach high school students, but also for, um, El Cap. Yes, thank you. So it'll be a fun event. Everything is more popular. And we raise more money through Rotary. That's it for me.
Dean?
Um, the contractor we had lined up for the CLC music building says not, not gonna be able to link our project headline. So we're kind of working this week. We'll get you an update on that as soon as we have a replacement.
You think I just hope to get them in the summer or is it?
Uh, yeah, I think there's other options.
Different hender.
Darlene?
Uh, just a couple of things too. But, um, I was at the wonderful AXA event at Bowers when they recognized Little Grace. And Mike was there, her lovely family. It was a really nice event. And a lot of kids who felt really special that day. And they really did their best job. So it was really fun. They've asked me to organize it next year. Like, why would I, why would we? Anyway, so I'm gonna get to do that next year, which probably will be really exciting to meet all these cute kids. Um, the Adult ESL Program, long awaited Adult ESL Program will be starting on May, May ninth. Jeff Dipple and Christina, can't think of her last name. She's an aide in our district, what is her career?
Yes.
Correo, thank you. Um, will be our teachers. Uh, we'll be running a pilot program between that and the end of the school year. So they can look at the curriculum that we have collaborated with our, in our consortium on, and consortium on. And they will be, um, using those materials. They will be field testing an assessment system that we are purchasing small packages for with the intent to go into a blended learning forum at some point. So that, they're really excited about developing an exciting program. And I'm ready for them to do it. And I think it'll be a great way to deliver instruction. Cause the biggest problem for the adult is folks are, these are working parents, these are working people. And if they can do things on their own time and a blended fashion, they'll be cool. So I'm really excited about the ideas that the two of them have for the program. And get it going. So start spending some of that grant money. That's our built-in block grant money. Um, also today, I, I had the wonderful opportunity, I've been meeting regularly with our STEM leads. But today we met up at the middle school with a couple of additional teachers to hear what everybody is doing. Uh, Carrie Dent was there representing the high school. Dustin Gowan was representing the work at Being Done in K5. There are just some amazing things that our teachers are doing. And we need probably to do some sort of update for you on the board. Cause there's some really exciting things. Uh, Carrie Dent has students who are in the OC Maker Competition once again this year. And some of the projects she were describing, she said her kids are certain that Logitech will be picking up any of that. So, you know, that kind of confidence are exactly the kind of things that go forward and make lots of money. So really exciting. Jesse Rothman was sharing what he's gonna do in the STEAM program next year. And it's really exciting to hear that. We'll hear more about that on Curriculum Committee. So a lot of good things going on. The Orange County, uh, the OC STEM Ecosystems Initiative, which is a group of us. I will be attending Friday night for the kickoff. And we'll start our meetings in May. So we'll be sharing those plans as we move along. That'll be a really dynamic group of folks. We have Crystal Cove as a representative. The Boys and Girls Club as well. So it's gonna be really exciting to do that work. Uh, the ROP event was fabulous. I, I, this is my third time. It's wonderful. Every time. Um, I was, I was just reflecting on my son who graduated with a psychology degree. And he said, Mom, if I can't get a job with, you know, my psychology degree, I'm gonna go back to Saddleback, get an ROP certificate and get a job. A lot of that. So he understands that that's really valuable as well. And finally, the school power grants. Um, I worked yesterday with the Endowment Group, who have worked really, really hard reading all of the teacher grants that our teachers submitted. There were some really exciting ones. Um, the principals and Mike Morrison and I spent untold hours looking at them over and over and determining, you know, which were innovative, which would be recommended to move forward. And so you'll be hearing more about those, but they're some really, really cool grants that I can't divulge yet. But it should be pretty exciting.
Thank you. And Lisa?
Uh, well, it's spring, so there's really three things we're focused on: negotiations, interns committee, and hiring. So, um, I'm sure we'll have more information from all three of those. But it's been very nice working with our teams, our bargaining units, um, in all three of those capacities. It's a very collaborative process and we'll have a positive outcome. And hiring is a little different than last year. Yes, it's looking, uh, not quite as intensive, which I'm glad about. But nevertheless, we're gonna, uh, you know, uh, make every effort to find, uh, people who are, have the best of experience, the best teachers that we can find, qualified employees as well.
Thank you.
And Darlene, wasn't that, with that ecosystem, was it really granted a second person? Didn't I, I think Teri Ann mentioned that to me at the Boys and Girls Club, that, that they allow both the Boys and Girls and the district to.
We did.
It was others, it just was one?
Well, we're supposed to only have one. And Pam Estes contacted me and I felt really bad. I said, I'm sorry. We went with Crystal Cove because they are, they actually have some funds and they were really excited about getting involved. And Dustin is looking at a marine-focused initiative. And, um, Pam said, well, I'll see what I can find out. And I said, I'm not usually the rule follower, but I didn't think I could approach them. She did and they said, absolutely, you could also have them. So that was really nice.
They were very close.
Yeah, really nice.
Thank you. Now, moving on to number twelve, I apologize for looking at people who do all the work. Um, maybe they have anything they'd like to pull on the consent calendar.
No, I just wanna share a couple of, couple of questions that I think answers work. So after we're over, may I create a motion?
Can I get a motion to accrue?
So.
Everybody. All those guys.
Well, just a clarification on page twenty, page twenty, that Roxanna, it's John Mann. She's sharing with just. I think the name was cut and paste, didn't it?
Yeah.
She's not sharing it with herself, just, just for the record on that. And then I did ask for a clarification of what other season was on the coaches on page twenty-four. And Lisa said it was, whatever it is, it's not, it's not one of the traditional seasons.
Right. So it's some work done and kind of outside the specific.
It's like spring football, right?
Right.
Spring football and then.
And then extended serve.
Because it goes on for ten months, something like that. I've heard recently, something like that.
It's a long process.
And then the other was on, um, De answered my question, um, that we didn't have, um, and there was the cost increase on exercising, um, especially in.
Right, this is the one that goes, how students go outside the district for services if they, for the five years they.
So we exercise a little bit in, come with the cost of this. And that is those things I asked, I answered.
Anyone else? Public comment? So go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to stop you.
No, that's okay. Um, on, on twelve Eve. Lovely. Uh, I just wanna mention, um, that I, I heard from, uh, just two, two families, but a little bit of negative about this. They feel that they are working really hard, both mother and father are working to live in this district. And that the, the money from their taxes should be, be better spent on, you know, our, their students than, um, putting so much out to employee students. And on the other hand, I feel strongly that employees, you know, it's a wonderful gift to let them bring their students here. Uh, and if you have three kids and that's like twenty-five thousand dollars a year, plus you don't have to pay for childcare. But also, we do, or I feel like I need to balance the people who do sacrifice to live in a smaller home, to vote work and all the things they sacrifice to be able to live in this district and then not have, you know, this considerable amount of money, then it's not available.
So De, you, you, you said E, but you meant F then? Because E is the ones who are going to, that are going, leaving.
Yeah, I meant, yeah.
Okay.
I meant, that's what I asked you.
I just wanted to.
I meant the whole thing.
Just the cost.
Just the cost.
The whole, yeah. So, just.
Just for the record, I, I agree with your settlement, but I see both sides of it too.
I see both sides, but I just want everybody to know that there's definitely another side out there of people that.
It's not easy. Okay, then we have a motion on the floor to approve twelve A through Q. On favor. Was there any, I didn't see the public comment. Number thirteen is monthly financial update, Mr. West.
That's, uh, monthly updates for the month of March thirty-first. Uh, this is prior to our April, obviously April, uh, uh, property tax receipts, which did come in, uh, according to expectations. Uh, this, uh, also, uh, this is, uh, familiar with the, with the same format we've done in prior monthly reports. Everything is, uh, as it would expect at this period of time. Uh, we did update on P one sixty-five, um, the schedule on the, uh, surf trust, trust for the old OPEB. Um, and we added in, uh, behind, behind the balance sheets and income statements for each bond on P one eighty-three, we added the, uh, investment report too, as a, did those reports come out quarterly? So, um, we're reporting more on quarterly, but we're attaching those to the monthly reports. So, um, that's the report we submitted to you and I'm available after a quick.
Thank you. Any public comment on this, with members?
Again, I just think it's important that we now have this inter-fund transfer. And the bottom of the page was clearly reflected there, at least in addition to being reflected on each, um, income statement for the various sub-funds.
You did track this.
Thank you.
With that, we will then move to number fourteen, the third quarter report on uniform complaints for the Williams case settlement in S.R.A. N.S.
I'm happy to report that in the third quarter, we have no, uh, reported complaints related to instructional materials, uh, properly credentialed teachers or facilities.
Any board comments? Public comments? Now we're moving to action items. Number fifteen is approval of revised job descriptions and reclassifications of CEA positions. And Lisa Wilson, Benson.
So.
It's not my mic right now.
I responded.
I'm renumbering it.
Um, so this is our most recent reclassification agreement with CSEA. And you may recall in past updates, um, that we have conducted comparison studies with our technology department in comparisons to those in other districts compared to this position, uh, benchmark positions that we have. And compared to our other district positions, the technology positions really aren't comparable to other districts. So that was, uh, one of the things that we studied in depth. And we are trying to renew, um, reclassification um, of those ranges for, uh, our technology positions. And those are listed here, um, E through H. Um, including creating, uh, one, uh, reclassifying one position to a completely different position because of the role that that, uh, particular person plays in a lot of our facilities, project, project management type things. Um, in addition to that, we also looked at reclassification of our library media employees. And particularly, that is another area where, um, twenty-first century needs related to technology. They really changed, uh, what that job does in terms of technology equipment. It's not just books anymore. Um, in fact, you know, there's probably fewer books and more, um, other types of devices and media that students have an opportunity to use for research. So, um, we have. So we have made recommendations in that area that are reflected here for all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And then there's just a small tweak to the administrative assistant to the principal position related to job duties for time and attendance types of systems. And so that is just a job description update. So I'm not sure if you have any questions.
Any word discussion?
Just as I say this perfectly, I'm a library media specialist. That's, the salaries goes down with those ranges.
Whenever we do, we study a reclassification, we look at salaries for those same positions in our comp districts. And what we found is that we were really higher on the ranges than our other districts and with a lot of the duties that have changed, these put us more in alignment with where we should be with other districts. Although to say that the employees currently in those positions will be Y-rated at their current salary range until they vacate on the position.
Yeah, that's.
So there's no.
No one gives a take, guys.
Right, correct. But for the future, we wanna still remain competitive, but we wanna be within the ballpark of what's reasonable.
So those currently in their positions will still continue to be on their step and get their.
Correct. They'll still get any salary increases.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
To their health, obviously.
Right.
Isn't it fair to say, the other side of that, the tech jobs are starting to pay more and there's more of them, but we're also bringing in some of the work that we sent contract out? Is that true?
Probably fewer additional assignment hours because of the work that our tech department is doing. I'm not sure that we're, and the amount of hardware, software, and deployment of devices, the one-to-one, the testing and assessment, et cetera. So we are just, you know, we have a multitude of technology now. Unfortunately, we have an outstanding technology department and they're worth every penny and then some.
So and also, the increase in salaries is helpful for preventing turnover.
That's correct.
Because these are the jobs that are really tough to find when people are.
Yes, that's correct.
Any public comments? Oh.
Shouldn't say.
Public, does seem to be a public comment. Oh, oh.
These are on the second page, on the, that recommendation on the database? That doesn't come with the revised job description?
No, the job remains the same, but what we needed in terms of flexibility of hours and the type of duties that they perform, that's why our recommendation was to remove the bargaining unit to give us more flexibility there.
What did you need a job description coming from?
I don't anticipate that.
Okay, okay. Just a page, this, this, thank you. And then on the technology side, did we change degree requirements right now when we're looking or we're paying less? That we're raising, did we? Or did we not? I remember we had a meeting, a technology meeting.
Yeah, I have to go back and look at that.
I know, so those are book are increasing. I know they're increasing, so I mean, but if we hire people that.
Yes, in fact, I think some of the existing tech positions that we have in here, that we have job description update for. I think we updated education last time, so on page, for example, page, I can't see which position this is, P204, a persistence administrator, that does require a bachelor's degree. I think we updated all of these.
Oh, okay. So I think part of it, we were paying less, we were.
Right.
More willing. Okay.
Yes, so we have raised the expectation as in terms of the preparation. And I know we have a couple in our department who have master's degrees, one of whom is the CTO and one is.
Oh, yes, no, I didn't mean to make it too, I just.
Oh, no, I know.
I just wanted to.
They're amazing.
Give it a some kudos.
They are amazing. I just.
Yeah.
Student flip side of the coin.
You didn't, you didn't put that in red, so I'm assuming we had that before.
Yes, we just revised those job descriptions, I think, last year or the year before.
Two years ago.
So they've been, yeah, fairly recently updated. We did do some additional tweaks though. It's always good to.
I think currently, it's that education requirement that, two years ago. Yeah, I just remember the conversation around whether they would look past it, depending, because the space range is so low. I don't know the end result of who they ended up hiring and I just wanted to make sure that we're still asking for it with the dollar amounts coming up.
That's it. Mike Morrison on the floor, the group 15, call a favor.
Aye.
Action item 16 is approval to increase work year of middle school media specialists at Thurston Middle School from 10.2 months per year to 10.5 months per year. This is also recent.
So this adds about, about two weeks to the middle school media specialist work year. And over the last couple of years, we've been providing additional assignment hours to that position anyway, because of the preparation that is required to make sure that instructional materials are prepared for the beginning of the school year. And now with technology, that's even increased. In addition, the establishment of the Wave Rider Day, which was very successful this year, since that is on the Monday prior to Labor Day, that means we have to even back it up further. And so it's important that that person's on board that couple of weeks earlier.
No approval, second.
Any more discussion on the settlement? Public comment? Call a favor. Moving to number 17, approval of elementary science specialist, job description, again, Lisa.
So as you know, over the last few months, we've reviewed a variety of options to provide the required contracted for the time for our teachers at the elementary level, as well to support our initiatives in science and STEM. So this job description has been designed to attract a teacher with the training, expertise, and enthusiasm to deliver a high-quality hands-on science program and to serve as a resource to our staff.
So this is kind of a dramatic change in the way. We haven't had one person who was dedicated at the elementary schools, I understand, to teaching science and also required to have that science education. And I know Dean commented on the teacher thing. That isn't always existing in any school. This is some of an exciting, I think, step for science as we start building towards a new generation of science standards that is something a little different, because you normally don't break kids out in elementary school with this. So it's an exciting, I think, new concept. So this is my opinion.
One person for both schools or?
One person at each.
So that is a change, because Kathy Vick was our, what, the head of itinerant science teacher. She taught at both top of the world and the whole world.
Right, and then we switched and we had Craig at top of the world and Linda.
Greg Carter, right?
Right, Greg Carter and Linda something and more.
They had a room set up, it was a science room, and kids worked in that room. That's nice.
That was great.
So we've done it?
Yes.
Well, did we do it at this level before we required either a degree or a number of units?
Yes.
We did, okay. Well, it's good that we're doing it at both schools and making it work.
Right, and it is a conversation, a positive conversation, finding these teachers who can teach with a science credential, and I think that's a great article on the topic, because it's. And the ones who, there was a gentleman who, they studied over the course of his first year of teaching, not being a scientist, but as a teacher. And he was overwhelmed with the amount of work and the energy that went into it. It's much easier being a scientist than teaching science. But he was amazing. And I know that my daughter's course, and you have a former JPL scientist teaching their chemistry class. And it is phenomenal to bring someone in with the degree, even though practicing in the field and being out teaching. And that's what the article is about, is they're having to look at people who are not necessarily teachers, right? And you have to go back from teachers to fill all these slots.
Trust you manage that. Yeah, because Laura said his time.
To go out of the way.
Have you gotten much response yet?
Yes, we've had a pretty good response. Now, we haven't.
Oh, good, okay.
Face to face, but yeah, that'll be coming. And yeah, I was pleased with the number of applicants that we had. So we'll see.
Do we have any, are we doing some comments?
Move approve.
Move approval?
Second.
First and second. Any public comment on this? Okay, call a favor.
Aye.
Moving on to number 18, approval of agreement with Charlotte Knox, who now took $9,900 to an investor.
So I'll just give a little preface here too, before Jenny and the team come up to talk a little bit about it. We had such great success with our test scores and just as Chris was talking about, the quantity and quality of writing of our students, which we noticed is a big demonstration of their ability to think critically and express themselves. In the elementary schools, in fact, our fifth grade writing scores are the highest in the county. So the middle school, not to be undone, so we are going to be focusing on writing across the curriculum this year. And have focused on this topic throughout the year, have really spent a lot of time with all of their folks in every curriculum area, thinking about what does writing look like in my particular content area and how do I do that? And sharing ideas and then said, "You know what? We need a little bit more information. We need to learn a little bit more about the three writing types that Chris addressed earlier, and what that means in a science classroom, in a social science classroom, you know, in all the various classrooms." So Charlotte came, as you remember, to work with them, because she's done a lot of middle school work and a lot of work with these three writing types and happens to have had success in our district. So we called her, she wrote a proposal that Jenny accepted, that you all approved, and she came out for three days. The staff were overwhelmingly complimentary and excited about it. Jenny was on fire and said, "We need to do more work and we want to get going so that next year we can start off very positively and have everybody going in the same direction." So Sarah, Michelle are both here as, they are both, they have one period a day to be a site coach up at Thurston Middle School and are doing incredible things in that role, doing professional development and coaching of their fellow teachers. And so they're here to share with Jenny what the plan is. And yes, I'm hearing that.
We just have a couple of short slides, because we are so passionate at Thurston about writing across the curriculum. And one of the things that we did over on the left is Sarah Schaper and Laura Silver this summer created a Writing the Way handbook with a bunch of writings, resources, and strategies and tips. And we passed one of those out to every single student when we started the school year this year, which is the first time we've done it, so that they would just keep it in their notebook. We had a real focus this whole year, or overarching goal for all of our staff members was writing across the curriculum. And we focused our conversations in our cross-curricular meetings on what that looks like in your department. And everybody participated, PE elected, John Mann would take it back to band and then come back out and talk about what it looked like writing in band, for instance. We even had the teachers, we created a rubric in the fall, holding our teachers accountable. So take your writing samples that you did in class, compare it to one of the rubrics, bring it back to the next meeting, and talk about what your kids are doing in your class. And then around October, November, we focused and we put signs around the campuses and in the language arts classes on the three main forms of writing, narrative, informative, and argumentative. So we really have been keeping this overarching theme, a consistent theme for our staff, so that we would see results. And what ended up happening after, I think it was right around November, December, we realized we needed more. And we were aware of what the elementary had done with their writing and Charlotte Knox, and we needed that expert to come on our campus. And we were ready, and I think the teachers were ready for the next step. Okay, the writing's not going away, I think what they figured out after a while. So we think we're doing it, but we're not quite sure what we really need to be doing in our classroom. So we invited Charlotte Knox to come.
And when she came, it was so overwhelming, sorry, for other teachers to come in and for the first time, see, how is a content teacher not a language arts? How can we use this writing expert to help facilitate in our classrooms how best to serve students? And so in February, she came down, Charlotte Knox, and she saw our specific needs at Thurston, and what could she do to tailor her program for our specific needs as teachers and students as she walked around? Then when she came back in March, we got together with department chairs, language arts, and leadership team, and we created with the help and wonderful guidance of Charlotte, so inspirational to do SER. So that was our school-wide adopted, now we have a single response for constructive response that we all bought into and we all will now use SER across the curriculum.
What's really cool about that, I just wanna share that Michelle and Sarah did focus groups with our kids and asked them what they thought was the most important one, because we had A's going, I's going, SER going, we had a couple of different ones. So they did focus groups with our kids, asked them which one made the most sense, and this is what the kids decided on.
So SER is what we're using, and then Charlotte came in and then used that to develop the pictures for us. And then we went from there to create the SER rubric. So for the school to have a common language is so valuable to us as teachers that we all are now teaching the same thing in a consistent manner in grade six, seventh, and eighth. And then as we moved towards, I mean, it's just a great thing now to see everybody focused on writing, writing across the curriculum, and that Charlotte has helped us to tweak and narrow it into our specific needs specifically at Thurston, and how to improve those kids and make them the best writers that we can in all content areas. So, yeah, things went really well in March. And teachers were able to, we all had input on what we thought, obviously, the students were telling us that SER worked best for them, claim, evidence, reasoning, and so that's what we went with. But we all met together to decide how that was going to look. We created the rubric, looking also at SPAC rubrics and including language that made sense for all content areas. So we decided at the end of our last day with Charlotte that we wanted to look forward to plan for next steps. So here's an idea of kind of what we have for May 17th. Leadership team was going to meet along with language arts teachers to determine some ideas for the school-wide implementation. We are going to revise and add to that Writing the Way handbook that you saw earlier to include more specific papers on SER and on other site initiatives that we have for the, for writing across curriculum, including our rubrics as well, so that students have that rubric to look at every time they go to write and they know what's expected of them. And then plan for school-wide writing celebrations and publications with an authentic audience. That was a really big thing that Charlotte was very passionate about and certainly, we would love to have more of that, that students are writing for an authentic audience, that they're publishing. She had great ideas like poetry slams, like blogs, like community presentations. So that was our plan, that's what we're planning to discuss on May 17th. And kind of again, what was really great about Charlotte is she did really work with us and listen to our needs and it was felt like a little bit more of an organic process, because she kind of heard from us, heard from the kids, and we made a plan kind of together. So then, after May 17th, she would be coming back to work with us again on the 31st and June 1st. One day would be Language Arts and Social Studies Collaboration Day, and another day would be a Science and Math Collaboration Day. And at that time, we would really work on year-long backwards planning. So we'd look at the three types of writing and how are we going to incorporate them across the curriculum? So is, Social Studies is gonna take argumentative in the spring and Language Arts will pick back up with informative in the fall. And then where are we gonna put our benchmarks in there? How are we gonna assess the students? So if we have that time to look at vertical articulation for content area and writing across curriculum, we also want to start with tier vocabulary, academic vocabulary, talk about formal writing style, and again, have those rubrics so that students really understand, again, it's really important for them to understand what's expected of them. And if we have a common language and we have a common rubric, we're just helping with the success for our students.
Ties in with our plan next year, we're gonna be very clear with all Thurston students about high expectations academically and behaviorally. So I think this just fits in nicely.
And that was just the little planning guide. This is not staged. Working hard and we didn't get any pictures, but this is them working hard, just double eating an apple. But I think it's exciting, because the staff is ready to hear what she's sharing with us. And it's just a really good blend of where we're going. And I like it that we're staying consistent with what the kids in the elementary have been taught with that writing style. So it's not like we're trying to do something new, we're just trying to add on to it.
Hey, can I just say, when you're sharing a rubric, I swear when I was in school, that was a big secret from the teachers. They had their rubric, you're not supposed to figure it out. Then, you know, it was like, it was crazy, it was insane-making. You know, and so now that you're sharing it with the kids, they know what they're, so it's like they can look at it and say.
Right.
And it's really, you're empowering them.
Right.
Which is huge.
And then the fact that the focus group, that they got to choose and that their ideas were heard, and that focus group was phenomenal. and that focus group was phenomenal, I will always, it was such an enriching experience. But as teachers too, that we're all now in this together. And as we move, and now the kids know it's writing SER and they're like, got it. And it's so great to see, it's just that common language to get them moving and motivated, it's phenomenal.
And it's the one rubric too, so students no longer have to guess like, I'm in science and this is what's expected of me.
And that's me, because I swear, because I was an English major and I was just good at reading teachers, right? I just got lucky, couldn't do anything else, but I was good at that. And so the fact that you're providing this and articulation vertically and horizontally or horizontally. You, again, math, not math, that's, it's huge. And it just, it is such a great, and I'm glad that you all as teachers are embracing it. I'm glad that this came from you and it's not something, here, we're going to show this thing and throw it, that you wanted it, you asked for it, and you waited, and the time is right.
It's shared kind of great conversations with staff that I can't have, you know, an expert in writing and sharing with them how it works in their subject area. And there's, it's just a different level of conversation and I think everybody's very appreciative of having that. So.
I definitely echo what Keta says, I love that the kids were involved and all of your enthusiasm. And I also really like the authentic audience part and whether it's a poetry slam or a blog, you're not just, it's not a contest where you're choosing one good student and we will publish that one. But everybody can be involved.
That's a question on what we have here as far as the format. What you have up there is a lot more than what's in here. And so I guess they can arrange that with her.
We've worked with her, I feel like one of the things that we did very successfully was her first trip out, there was a lot of conversations going back and forth, how to meet with a small group and try to have a plan and everybody being represented and then pushing it out to a large group. And there's, it's kind of like an accordion style of information going back and forth. So we've worked with her when she comes back, meet with department chairs, meet with the language arts department, come up with a plan, where do we want to go? We want the language arts department to be included in everything since they're obviously language arts, but the department chairs to be involved and then come back and kind of format those up next two days.
So in here, when she wrote, May 17th and March 31st, should be May 31st.
It should be May 31st.
And then it also mentions elementary and high school teachers and you're not doing that piece? It'll just be Thurston teachers?
Correct, it'll just be Thurston teachers. I think we were thinking maybe we would be open if there wanted to be a rep from either of the sides, but we have not suggested that yet.
Dustin was planning to participate and maybe the two intervention teachers from elementary. And we were hoping to maybe bring a couple of high school teachers to kind of say, okay, what does that mean for us?
I just assumed that all of you guys plan, that she knows that. I mean, because her format is not as expansive. Just to Darlene's point, the brain, perhaps reading some high school teachers, they might want to be aware of what's coming their way. It's pretty amazing. Yeah, I have to say, my eighth grader would like you guys not to do that. That was like a slide through. Like he was like, I hope they don't know all the writing we're doing here.
Don't tell them.
To high school. I know, that's all I do, because they didn't really talk about it. You guys were talking about so much writer initiative, that was why I went to orientation, you didn't hear it. So he's like, oh, I hope they don't know anything about it.
Maybe I'll see what happens when it's defined as when expectation is done. The variety of expectation can vary, but to see if that helps kids.
And that was a huge expectation, that they were confused of having one teacher in one subject teach one way, one way, and their thing was, can it be consistent? Right, they're our audience, this is, and that was the biggest aha moment for Charlotte. She's like, you work for the students, your business building is that building that they come to every day. And how would I not, as a teacher, service my student who asks us every day that they were not being good servants to who they are? And that's my client, every day, my students are my clients. And that was what they asked, therefore we provided that.
Well, I was gonna say, and I know you and Silver worked on the way. I see it every day, right, right in the way, because my kids use it every day. I just want you to know, like, they really do, when I open up, they pull it out. And the fact that you would include more and kind of put the language in it, and I would see that. And the rubric, I think that'd be amazing. And the rubric just to have, you know, every time they start, okay, what do I really need to do? And you go through before, because they do, they sit and they look at it. And each teacher has different ones, so they have to pull that out. And if we want, this is one, already in the binder, it's fabulous, and you know, get the high school tied in, mentor school.
Then really to focus, you know, in eighth grade, yes, they hit it, ninth grade on content. I mean, not that they're not focusing on content, but they have the structure down, they know the expectation, they're very clear about that part, and they can just produce the content, it's really great.
My group's parents talking at high school head about writing the way.
Yeah. It's for their benefit. I think too, to Jenny's point of having students really understand the expectations. And if we have this resource for them that has, you know, everything that they need in there for writing and all of their expectations are very, very clear, I think that that'll make it easier, a smoother transition. Obviously, the elementary, the middle school transition is always a little bit of a rough one for the kids. And I think just, it's another way that we're really trying to make expectations clear, expectations high, but certainly attainable for them to meet what our goals are for them. And providing that scaffolding of the Writing the Way and of the rubric and so that they really understand and can be successful.
And then I have a question on the May 31st, June 1st. Will you have like John Mann or others in there as well?
It didn't show up there, but we do. Really, the only department that we've excused because they chose was PE. And we have been trying to include them and we've included them in a lot of the conversations that for those days. No, but yes, everything else, art, drama, band, foreign language, everybody specialized, everybody is part of those days.
I'm glad you're splitting PE because this probably is the thing I hear more from parents in my everyday conversation is, my kid has to write so much. And it really is like they're happy they are and they're happy the expectation of it. But they're also, they hear the suffering sometimes that goes along with it, right? And so they're kind of just moaning a little themselves, right? They're sharing their suffering, listening to their suffering, but they're appreciative of how far you've been along. But if you edit PE, I think that might send a couple over the edge like, even PE?
In fall, Steve Hall would come into our meetings and sit at a table with a two-star and have a writing sample and he was participating, so they're definitely thinking about it. I just don't know if it needs to be the full thing, so.
I just want to add one comment, because I saw tonight this program from kindergarten up to fifth grade, I guess. And now this program here, I'm thinking of that my daughter's going through AP testing. As you take these kids up to the thing, just to continually working on them. I know the high school teachers pellin' away. My daughter said, this program's really been tough on me. And she said, oh, but it's made me a much better writer. So we keep working on them with the goal, ultimately, they're going to grow up to either college or career. And you're giving them this skill, you know, writing and speaking are two of the things that studies show make the difference between the most successful people. Even in a corporation at the top level, they've shown that the ability to write and vocabulary and speak differentiates people at the top level corporations. These are wonderful things we're doing and it's great to hear about these programs. Thank you all.
It does.
First off, I got a motion. Any other, is there any other important comments? Do we have any public comments on this? All in favor? Okay, we'll move on to number 19, approval of summer school program. I believe this is Darlene, we're delayed. We're working hard.
Sorry. It's a quick call.
It's coming.
I have a very short PowerPoint, but we're asking for you to approve the dates and the budget and the overall program for the summer school program this year. Okay, once again, we will have a preschool through eighth grade program. As we asked for last year due to the recommendation from Ryan Cool and Dustin Gowan last fall, we are extending the K8 summer school days by about four days. So they'll start on Tuesday, the 28th and finish on July, the 28th, which will allow the teachers to do professional development and assessments at the beginning. Or can you move it? That theme here. And then also to have a chance to compile the assessment at the end of the group. So the teacher will be participating in collecting that data. The writing type that they'll be practicing this summer is informative writing, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in just a moment. As usual, the high school program will be a five-week program, June 27th through July 29th, with the fourth of July off. August 15th through August 28th will also be the special education program that we hold every year. K8 will be at Elmore Elementary, and this year Nicole King will be our principal. We're a little excited about that because she's working really hard to get more second-class middle school students involved in summer school. Particularly area Yale students, she's working with Johnny, but also other students who could really benefit from that boost. Last year, that was the smallest part of our program. So she's made personal phone calls to the parents and working with teachers to identify those kids. And the high school, we're not quite sure, they have some applicants that we'll be talking to shortly for the principal position. The only thing really new for the high school program this year is the addition of Breaker 101. Actually, Lisa Reguilla set the idea how that we have a transition program for students coming into the school and that might give that a little bit of boost. And Carrie Denton worked on curriculum for that. So they will be offering a new program, which sounds kind of exciting and we're already identifying students who might benefit from that transition program. Specialized services and IMP will also be there, the usual credit recovery course opportunities for students. The SC online for students who are credit deficient and need an opportunity to work on that or perhaps take a health class. English language development will continue to work with our English orders and are probably going to have more students this summer because we're working very proactively on that. And the usual advancing courses and go with econ and mona United Nations.
Last question, what is the Breaker 101 taught during the summer?
What is it?
The Breaker 101 course is a talk during the summer during the transition?
Same thing, a lot of time.
Okay, because it's summer, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it'll be a two-hour course instead of a four-hour.
Somehow I was placing it wrong.
But for all five weeks.
How long?
Yes, for all five weeks, but two hours rather than four.
That's great.
Okay, but NUAN isn't that long though, right? I mean, it's just a shorter course. Isn't it at the end of the summer?
Not really, sure.
That's a good question, I don't know, I'm like, you know, I'll find out.
It wouldn't be the same with it, I mean, it's on the summer school. It hasn't, it's been like a long stay.
They do a little bit different program for that.
It's not a four-credit course, and so I think it has not been as long. But we can find a great, not a bad date.
Probably solve this every day or something.
Victoria, will you advance?
I can't be the chief, thank you.
No, honestly, is that, that's not to advance, that's to catch up?
Typically, it's catch up, typically it's try to recover. Kids who are deficient, they could, they could come to summer school, but they could also be took, doing some of those courses online at home and we'd have a teacher to oversee that. Okay, so here's Breaker 101, Breaker 101, it's a freshman transition class. As I said, they'll be doing a campus tool of learning about pride, the owner of the high school. They'll find out who to do at the high school, who they might talk to, the graduation requirements, subject preview of a lot of the bigger subjects. They'll be working on some basic skills, they're working on some basic skills, and also some tech, learning all the line of the things and what some of the expectations might be at this school. But should be pretty big.
Is that the targeted group or is that anyone who wants to sign up?
It's anyone who signs up, but we're also identifying students to call in.
So it's a large number, not just a class size?
I think it's a 20, 25.
Oh, okay.
Okay, the K8 summer program will be the same, I didn't think of the title, so I'm not there yet, so this is going on. So it will be based around the theme of STEM. So we'll be teaching our usual literacy, our English language arts intervention types of programs and mathematics through the lens of science and engineering practices. And how we will do that is Dustin will be serving as our summer school coordinator this year. He is developing a curriculum based on the STEM scopes, supplemental materials that teachers are using right now in elementary and probably be identifying for all teachers to use as a way for next generation science interns. These are kits and very practical hands-on science experiments as well as online resources that are pretty amazing, and teachers are pretty excited about that. So we thought, why don't we pilot that, use it with our students in the summer? And it has a very strong literacy component, about reading and writing in there as well. And as I said, the students will also be doing a pre-test on information writing and also post-test. Last year, we showed tremendous growth working on separate writing from the beginning to the end. So we look forward to doing the same this year. Okay, same program as last year, the special education services, ELD for grades one through eight, intervention classes in both ELA and math in grades one through five, and the same thing in grades six and eight. Okay, we'll also be continuing to do those things that are intervention-focused. The foundational reading skills, giving kids those extra boosts that are still deficient or have some big gaps in their learning in terms of their reading skills and writing informational texts, we'll be using a SER model at summer school. So the kids are familiar with that, you know, how do I go about thinking about my writing? I'm going to use that model. So we'll introduce it to the elementary kids then as well, some of them are already using it. And we're looking to really have targeted math instruction. Learn your needs through a pre-test, figure out what specifically gaps they might have, not really. Also trying to look at ways to weave the math and STEM activities together. So Dustin's working on that now, so we'll probably make it phenomenal. And that's it? Any other questions?
Are there buses provided here?
Yes. And it's at a lot because there's construction at the other campus, right? And you're taking into consideration how much longer it will take to get there in the summer?
For some kids, yeah, through town, because.
Does it impact it though, when you, at that time of day?
Oh, at noon, it's not, in their country?
Well, it turns on.
On a Friday, maybe on Friday, but that's.
But still, not that fast, more like it was after school, radio time, two o'clock, three o'clock later.
The other thing too was we talked about the teachers, you know, at Top of the World have it every year and their classrooms are impacted in some way, they can't get in. So we're trying to look at some equity between the campuses and because of construction.
Right, but everybody has to drive to it.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that for sure and see how much it impacts.
So this year, it was just circumstances, they certainly would weigh all those factors in future years. Now, does that mean the parking that we did last year in the city?
No, we'll be providing that.
I don't think they're going there anyway.
Okay.
I did approval, right, no? Your approval? Any public comment on this? For the board comment, no? All in favor? Moving on to number 20, approval of curriculum committee recommendation for pilot of computer science slash coding program at Top of the World Elementary, Garland.
Thank you, yeah, sorry, I'm a little tired. This was a pilot proposal brought forth by Mike Conlon, who was here to talk a little bit about it. The curriculum committee thought it was an exciting idea to pilot and think about, and they looked at the implications for implementing it. And Mike's going to tell you about why he was so excited, but I'll go with Mike.
Sure. So, good evening again. So Raj Sidhu, he's the owner of Code Canvas. He actually is a TOW alum, he reached out to me last spring. They offer some after-school coding classes. So I connected with him, we met, and I was able to bring his coding class to our campus in this past fall, he's been here for the entire year. He reached out to me a few months into the school year and he has a vision of bringing computer science instruction to elementary students. So he, as a company, he developed a training for elementary-level students and he's been wanting to kind of, again, his vision, bringing it to all Orange County schools. So he reached out to me because we had the relationship with the after-school class. And he's offered it as a free pilot. So the only cost will be for the subs for teaching. So it has to be two, three-hour sessions of instruction run by Raj probably on our campus. And with that, there's also materials and lessons that he's designed and are available on his website. He's also created a really nice graph showing the progression of kind of computer science skills by grade level. Like ideas of what type of robotics to use from kindergarten all the way through, what type of online resources from codable to scratch and what's appropriate at each level. So it's truly exciting. I brought it to my teachers, I had them come talk at a staff meeting and they, every hand just was raised, who mentioned who would be interested in it. So we had about 19 teachers who initially, they would love to try to start with the training and then move in there, just to kind of improve their skills, knowing it's maybe not their area of expertise. So we're excited to get the training going and then really collaborate and work with Raj to really build up the computer science skills and the coding skills of our students and our teachers at TOW. So we're definitely excited to give it a shot and see how it works.
One of the things he shared that we really liked in curriculum committee was that you can use coding across the curriculum, because we thought, well, they already have a lot of math, where will that fit? And he was talking about it, he's got some programs so they can do coding in language arts. I can't imagine what that looks like, but we've found out.
Yeah, you can say, it's a little powerful, you can use.
Yeah, other areas. So again, this is a pilot program for the students, but he's offering professional development for teachers. And then the plan would be that we would reevaluate that over time. There may be some interest also at Elmore. And if we decide to move forward, that could become a part of our curriculum potentially, but that's how we look. Right now, we're going to see how it goes. We're excited to get anything in computer science from those students.
I love these TOW a lot. Who didn't love them at elementary school, oh my dear.
But TOW, they have to go there.
I didn't go there, I still feel like I don't like them. I get it.
Another best question, I know that there's ROP coding classes. Is there anything on the wheel at the middle school? For Jenny here.
I believe there are, there are, coding classes.
We have a coding class.
There's a coding class.
For seventh and eighth grade, Stacy Tierney teaches it, it's a year-long elective and we're doing Python, which I just confirmed today is where you, they do more drop-down, drop and drag coding as opposed to what Carrie Denton's doing at the high school, which is actual coding, typing things in.
We just started to see all three classes inside my head.
CH, something like that.
And they're currently after-school coding classes at both elementary sites, so kind of getting students exposed to it. We had one, Raj's doing a class that all third through fifth grader can sign up. And then we had, Linda Davidson was doing a code And then we had, Linda Davidson was doing a, a coding class for us. We moved her in and we offered for first and second graders, can get introduced to, to coding. So we definitely have a little, you know, in, interested, interested students coming through straight after school. This is our way to really develop the expertise among our staff and then see how we can, you know, just integrate this into what we currently do.
One scratch is a perfect elementary school, you know, coding, I mean, it's a simple. And, and you feel so empowered with the, um, the graphics. You know, I actually just deleted tons of it off my computer because some kids. Which is.
But having with that, while we've been talking about the evolution of STEM and the coding movement has announced, beginning to really come into existence at all levels, which is pretty exciting. That's it. Move for approval?
Move for.
Second. Any public comment on this? Further discussion?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, my all in favor?
Thanks for.
Moving on to twenty-one. Approval of curriculum committee recommendation for algebra textbook adoption for Laguna Beach High School in Thurston school, and again.
Move approval?
Second. Great, now we're going to.
The, the high school staff and Thurston, teachers in both of those schools evaluated the materials, decided to go with the same series, the Big Ideas Man that we've been using for Algebra II Geometry and also for the K five program. So they were very happy with the consistency and the quality and the depth of the text. And we have done all the proper things, and our board policy posted the materials at, at all, the book materials at all three schools so that parents could view them. We've had no feedback to date. Also posted it on our website, so we've announced it in plenty of time. So teachers are excited and would recommend that we move to adopt these materials.
Further comments?
I, I like the fact that it's the same publisher, and I love the fact that they're talking about how in order to work with children at different levels, they have an investigation piece that's going to be very simple to allow for people to really know and how this will work and, and all tied together, coding has to be rewarding for the teacher and for any of the classmates.
Thank you. I should say too that it includes digital access, and teachers were asking them more and more to use the digital access with their students because they have the problem.
It is, and I think, my, I think they.
The two are getting together.
I think digital applies itself well in math. Like some kids need the paper and stuff, or the language arts or other stuff, but for math, it's.
Another thing that's radically changed, a lot of kids now don't have textbooks per se. They have it on the computer. And it's all the way through college, because unless I go to get his book, he doesn't let me get it.
So he buys something.
He's yet to buy it. Oh, the book is still there. Paying the aspect for me.
Books sometimes I even come around.
Any other more comments on this? Public comments on this? All right, all in favor? Moving to twenty-three. Approval of bid award to Professional Repro-Graphics Incorporated Program.
Thank you.
You can either be accelerated now.
Do you want to do twenty-two yet? I'm sorry, number twenty-two.
It's the same. Yeah, it's just the same.
Approval of curriculum committee recommendation for textbook adoption for Thurston Middle School Accelerated Math Class.
That's it?
It's almost a second.
Almost a second.
Further?
All right, okay. The difference here is that these are the compacted book materials, or the two compacted courses that you approved that are math pathways discussion. So they'll do six, seven book and a seven, eight book. Okay. And it's also Big Ideas, also has digital access, pretty much the same techniques. The more advanced.
And, and that's the same thing, where you can work with children at different levels, even in this more advanced, probably maybe kids who still want to break out.
Any public comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Now we move to twenty-three. Approval of bid to more professional reproduction, reprographics, excuse me, I keep wanting to say that, Inc. Program for two thousand sixteen classroom audio recording equipment and installation. Mr. West?
Yes, this is part of our Force the Elite program, and as you know, we see funding in the nation to play the school tower, so we have twelve new classrooms getting on the board. This is actually the, the audio vision look-up monitor mounting options to buy the, the monitor TV in that piece too. But also, I think the technology related to making that work seamlessly in the classroom, very specific.
Move approval?
Second.
Further discussion? Public comment? All in favor? Moving to twenty, excuse me, number twenty-four. Approval of emergency contract with American League Detection Inc. to repair or replace its average gas lines at Thurston Middle School. Sounds like she'll do that. Move approval?
Second.
Okay, this is Mr. West.
Yeah, Mr. Dixon, come forward if you can. Let me get to you a little bit about, you've probably got some of this in the update, but we'll talk a little bit.
Someone over there.
Thank you, Mr. West. Mr. President, I'm just the board. Unfortunately, in Thurston Middle School, we've detected several small gas leaks. They were immediately detected and the gas was shut off right away. But in order to get the gas back on, all repairs must be made, and the gas company needs to come and certify that there is no more leaks. This will likely result in costs exceeding the bid limit. So in order to move forward and quickly make the repairs for this project, we need to get unanimous approval from the Board of Education, as well as permission from the Orange County Department of Education, which we've already received. So that we can continue on this work. We're working with engineers at the gas company and from American Detection to make sure all the repairs are done to current code, and that we can repressurize the gas system. The reason we classify it as an emergency is because gas is required for the normal operations of the school.
So they have no hot water, right?
No hot water. We did make, we did add temporary electric water heaters for the kitchen, so they are able to wash their hands with warm water. We've done all the groundwork with the health department and our nutrition services staff to make sure that we're providing as many accommodations as we can. It's all been approved by the health department as well as the gas company, and now we just need to continue to make the repairs as quickly as possible, which is the intent.
How soon can you get this done? After this?
Work is already underway. In terms of engineering, they have it stocked. As soon as we get the pipes, which are a custom order, because there are multiple sizes that don't come standard, six inch, three inch, four inch. I will provide that update as soon as I have that information, but right now, I just, I don't know.
But hoping for the end of the school year?
That is absolutely our goal.
Okay.
Uh, as soon as possible. That's, that's why we want to come forward with this idea.
I just hear a gas leak.
Yeah, there is no gas leaking. We shut it off right away. It's just, but it.
But, so how was it discovered?
Initially, it was called in from one of the teachers that they smelled gas. Uh, the gas company came out within about an hour of that. They found where the potential leak was. Um, it was very minor, it was about ten thousand parts per million, um, which is small. If you think about it, maybe almost like pinhole-sized leak, but unfortunately, there's multiple pinhole-sized leaks, and a lot of them are underneath the buildings, existing buildings. So in order to make the repairs, a lot of it, what we're going to do is tie it to an existing pipe that we know is good, abandon the old pipe that's underneath the buildings, so that we don't disrupt and have to trench through our classrooms, and we can provide a new pipe without having a lot of damage to our existing site.
What kind of pipe is that?
It's a polyethylene. It's, um, bullet, it's bulletproof. It's going to be the latest state-of-the-art type of pipe that we use on gas.
I was thinking of what the pipe that failed.
It's a combination of different types. We have some new cast iron as well as some new polyethylene.
All right. Other comments?
We do have some modifications in the meal program at the site, since the, the, the items have to be wrapped prior to receiving the site and based on the health purchase. So it adds back to some of the change, but they're, they made that adaptation after all.
How about in the science classrooms? Is it, do we have the accommodations there?
Cast is off, because it's, they're having to adjust their programs.
Thank you.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Hi, hi. Thank you, Jeff.
Moving to number twenty-five. Award of contract of miscellaneous general contracting work based on unit costs for various sites for worldwide, worldwide construction. Mr. West?
Yes, so Mr. Dixon's going to address this as well. You've already approved the going out for bid. This is the comeback and the award of this. Let's talk a little bit about the general contracting.
Thank you, Mr. West. Mr. President, I'm here for the board. Thank you for having me back. This item is, I would think of it as a purchasing option for us. We are not tied in any way to using this contractor for all of our projects. However, what it will allow us to do is test some of our larger projects because it meets the requirements for a competitive bid process. The unit costs are based on a timing material, and it is a maximum amount that, that's in the bid. We can always negotiate with the developer, but it's common practice for facilities. We use multiple ones for any project, regardless of going up to bid or not. Um, so this is going to be used as a tool for us as we look to complete some of our larger maintenance items at each one of our stores.
Move approval?
Although, so even though there's no, and this is no financial impact, that will come with each project.
Right, yes, this is in our maintenance project, in our question, so we will do that.
Will, will be based on the, the annually approved master plan, where we identify some of those larger maintenance projects.
Good, thank you, Jeff. Um, any public comments on this? Um, all in favor?
Hi.
Moving to number twenty-six. Approval of inspector service agreement of U C M I Inc. to provide division of state architecture. Architects require inspection of record services for district-wide construction projects with a not-to-exceed amount of sixty-five thousand dollars. Mr. West?
Um, Mr. Dixon, you can also talk about the projects that we're going to use to find this inspector. This is an inspector that we're familiar with, but let me talk a little bit about the process and.
Thank you, Mr. West. We solicited from about five inspection firms for their hourly rates to perform the inspections that would be necessary for our projects this summer. Those are the projects pertaining to the Division of State Architecture Approval, where you are required to have an inspector of record to make sure that the construction goes per approved plans and specifications. Where in those proposals, U C M I submitted the lowest hourly rate, which is sixty dollars per hour. The not-to-exceed amount was generated based on the worst-case scenario, that would assume he serves eight hours a day every day of summer. So I don't think we will meet that not-to-exceed amount. However, it's better to get a single approval and work backwards and try to come back later, especially as construction projects tend to move fairly quickly over summer. This would cover all of the projects from the shade structures at Almore to the scoreboard at the stadium and Top of the World. So as we make adjustments, we will continue to modify that amount, but as Mr. West mentioned, this inspector has been helping us out recently with a lot of our DSA closeouts as well, so he's very familiar with our sites. And we've been successful at closing a lot of those projects without certification, so we know he's good on that front, which is important for us in facilities that we not just construct projects, but we close them with certification.
Move approval?
Second, and if he has, um, we have multiple projects, multiple sites, we can do it with one inspector?
You can, so long as the project schedule allows, but his firm has multiple inspectors that, um, all are able to work on it. It varies.
Okay. So it's an hour you charge for each one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's, it's a fixed, six dollars per hour for any inspector based on the project types that we've submitted.
And my understanding before is they, they're there the whole day? I mean, they're.
It, not really.
They're really working it so they can go.
Yeah, so for example, on the shade structures, they'll want to just see that the rebar cage is using the properly sized rebar and the spacing that's required after it's drilled into the ground. They'll pour the concrete, they'll take a cylinder of the concrete to do testing, but they don't need to wash the concrete, be poured in the rest of the day. That's, and that's just what he says.
Watching paint dry. All the good stuff.
Fortunately, that is not under USA jurisdiction.
Good, glad to hear that. Glad to hear that.
Thank you so much. Public comment? All in favor?
Hi.
Moving to twenty-seven. Award of a contract for track and field replacement at Laguna Beach High School by Iram Davy, Inc. in the amount of seven hundred eighty thousand dollars, five hundred forty acres.
Move approval?
Second.
This again is Mr. West and Mr. Dixon.
Mr. Dixon, we'll take this exciting one. The track and field is coming up. It's right here.
Stadium man.
Very excited about that. Um, I've worked with this contractor in the past when I worked at a texture firm and specialized in stadium, and they're very well-versed in stadium construction. In addition, uh, the bid spread that came in was very good, and to have them come in under a million dollars puts us well below what our budget had been for the project, so, I'm happily recommending the award for this project, and it will allow us to meet our current schedule, which we have planned to start construction May sixteenth and be done by end of July. We are working on signage to post before the start so that we can notify the community of the closure of the stadium. Um, and with this approval, we'll be able to continue on that path.
And you, so you had worked with this guy, this, this group before?
Yes.
Because that's significantly under law, but one would.
They specialize in stadium.
Sure, the clarification is that this, uh, this work is the ones that are doing the ground, uh, and the drainage underneath. They have separate contracts for the actual, uh, track and the actual field turf.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Okay.
They lay their own product, and so the purchase of that product is done.
And that's.
So as we're looking at the overall budget, those two things are covered, and then we have the, a portion of the budget that was.
Yes, but, so this is the one that's going to come, put this stern under, and this is the, and the port route, and this is the big, yeah.
Yes, this is.
This is the big installation, right?
The earthwork, not the adjustment case.
We get probably. Okay. Yeah, good, thank you. And the others are, are quicker installation, correct?
Thanks, Rick.
I mean, this will be the, this will be the wondest part of the project, doing this.
Oh, ab, absolutely.
And then we have companies that come in and actually do the, down the turf and the track quick.
Right, because of, of all the additional drainage we're adding especially, and new, uh, electric outlets and water lines, um, that's going to take the majority of the time.
Further comments?
We make a motion.
Yeah, we did, we did.
I did, I did.
Um, public comment?
I did.
You're going to take that public on top? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Moving now to number twenty-nine. Approval of first reading of board policies and recommendations for second meeting and approval. Dr. Smith?
Yes, these policies are brought forward to the board for your consideration by, uh, for our first reading. The, the board policy committee met on April eleventh, and we looked closely at these and made, um, minor tweaks as appropriate. And the information is included as backups, was also in the board update, and we're happy to address any questions or suggestions before bringing them forward for our proposed second meeting.
Can I just say thank you, one, for the why, the laws, whatever, and for this?
Yes.
The red.
Yeah, I can see.
It was a group effort.
It, it is a group effort, but Victoria works really, really hard on these. We all do, no question.
This.
But that part, and I agree, it makes things a lot clearer, because it does take effort. Helps us all. Uh, starting with A, uniform complaint procedures. Any questions, Miss Staff? Do you want to motion them one by one, or?
What do you got?
This is a.
It's a first reading. Any questions on?
Is it first read to a formation?
That's correct.
But we put them just in case we want to prove where we need to.
Right. So use, up to you. We have listed them under action items now so that you can. It's, it's your option.
I just had a question about, um, part two of that, about the.
Which ones do you, I'm sorry.
What page do you?
I'm on page P three two two.
Okay.
And the harassment and intimidation bullying against any person. Now, if, if it isn't because of gender or religion or, um, you know, nationality, those things, if someone just feels like they're being bullied by whoever their boss or another staff member, in what form do they feel that?
That's under the complaints against employees, which is a separate process. So we have, uh, three, three complaint policies. One is for employees, one that you refer to, one is uniform complaint, because it's still with federal laws, and the third one is for construction materials.
Okay. And if a, if a parent has a complaint.
About an employee, if it alleges discrimination, harassment, bullying, it would fall under uniform complaint. If it's a complaint about an employee for a different reason, it would be the complaints against district employees.
I think it's thirteen, twelve point one.
Okay.
Any other questions on that one? Questions or concerns on B, promotion acceleration retention? Okay, um, tobacco, which is C, any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, physical education.
Yeah, I mean, physical education, is it all pass for?
No. No, PE is great.
PE is a great.
So is your, so is your, so you're, you're in a sport, your sport is a great.
Yeah, you're a great, so it is a great.
Your sport.
So it affects your GPA?
Yes, although colleges often, not all of them, it's about one hundred percent, colleges often take this to academic GPA. Some colleges do include PE as part of the GPA.
Okay. Be, yeah, because, um, I got a call about a student who took, took PE and actually took two PEs. and actually took two PEs, got A's, but brought down the GPA because it wasn't a weighted grade and didn't expect that that's what's going to happen.
That's actually all the courses that they're getting.
That's really, yes, policies are not that.
But also, everybody's going to get that, I mean, anybody who's in sports, if it's sport, it's, it's all.
That's not a. But I, but I thought that most, there, there were only so many PEs you had to take. So if you take more than that, there's still, you still keep getting A's and they bring your GPA down.
Yes, every time you take any course of a P now, correct, more or less prospectively.
Or the highest honors.
Then it's going to lower your GPA.
Not for sure.
But.
Right.
Well, there you go.
Yes, that's, yeah, happy for bringing that to me. Yes, for a lot of people, missing that.
You can't take two PEs in one year.
Because you could get two A's in a month, you know what? Okay, and I know that wasn't exactly.
But this policy is really, it has to do more with.
If you take all P's, someone would be calling in Georgia.
And then what the exemptions are, and how we, and what qualifies as an exemption, and how we put all of it down.
And, and how does it apply to elementary minutes?
Elementary minutes are a certain number every two weeks, was it two hundred minutes over two weeks?
Two hundred minutes over two weeks.
Very, but since we have a P specialist in our A's, we, we exceed that instantly.
Over the two, two hundred minutes of the two weeks.
Over, over two-week time span.
We updated the policy to show that it's critical. Yeah, this one has minutes for the older grades. And it's talking about the exemption.
There's an ed code, we can put that in the update. Is there a concern?
Well, I, I, some people thought they weren't getting enough minutes at the elementary.
Oh, yeah. That was early.
I trust you, they are.
Yeah, same.
They are really good shape in the elementary, first P.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just say.
And I believe the elementary minutes are addressed in the AR, based on the lawsuits that came about for the.
I know, we're so.
For, for the, the instructional minutes. So this, actually, this board policy.
Do we get the ARs in the updates? I think we did.
We did, yeah.
I think we did.
Yeah, and we can put that in again this Friday, just to clarify.
And also, is this, as far as elementary, is meant to address the PFT test for fifth grade as well?
Okay.
And so it covers the PFT.
Thanks.
Okay, any questions on the next one? Questions, comments, concerns? And then our last one, which is state academic achievement tests. Questions, comments, or if we'll bring these forward for a second reading and recommended approval at our next board meeting? And can you have questions in between now and next meeting? Just so we can email us multiple pieces of information, the update policy.
But just for clarification, what we're bringing up tonight is simply the first reading.
We don't have to put it out there.
We're not voting on it, no?
You don't have to put it out there.
Okay. All right. I, I think it was an action item.
Well, it is, put it as an action, so just in case you decide to skip.
Oh, I see.
The second reading, just in case anybody was desperate to hold on for it now.
If you do the latitude as a board, because our board policy says that you can wait for a first reading. So we've tweaked them. Very seldom, yeah, maybe once. Right, but that gives you the latitude, so we do recommend it come forward for a second reading.
Yep. Public comment? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Well, it's not, it's a close session.
Oh, yeah, well, if you adjourn, you guys are the.